Oh, it's great to see a full house tonight. Thank you for coming out, everybody. Good evening and welcome to the St. Patrick's Day edition of the Midland Public Schools Board of Education Meeting. If everybody could take a second and check your phones, make sure they're on silent or vibrate, and then join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Jen, take role.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
President Roush is not here. Vice President McFarland.
Here.
Secretary Ringgold here. Treasurer Lauterbach not here yet. Member Blasey.
Here.
Member Craig.
Here.
Member Horowitz.
Present.
Okay, we'll move right into our consent agenda. Item 2.1 is approval of the minutes from February 18, regular meeting, and March 3, special meeting, as well as the March 3 closed session. Item 2.2 is a list of staff recommended for hire. Item 2.3, the announced staff and their resignation dates are listed in the agenda. Item 2.4 is approval of a payment of the school systems bills for the month of January 2025, as listed in the check registered prepared by Mrs. Holderby, in the total amount of And item 2.5 is a request to authorize legal payments, as listed in the agenda. I will accept a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Support.
Okay. Motion by Ringgold, support by Horowitz. Any discussion regarding the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up, item 3, presentation to the board. 3.1, Shining Stars. Penny.
We have two shining stars. We will start with Deb. I know she's here in the crowd. Come on up, Deborah. This certificate says Deborah, but those of us who've known Deb for a while and work with her, she's a Deb. Come stand right here. And she is an absolute gem. This is for you.
Thank you.
And here's what we also know about Deb. She does not like to be in the spotlight, so I extra appreciate that she showed up tonight to get this award. Deb joined the MPS team in 2005 as a paraprofessional at HH Dow High School, the position that she currently holds with the district. She is also a graduate of Midland High School. Deb was nominated for her shining star by MPS colleagues, plural, and among the comments are: Deb is kind, passionate, responsible, helpful, and considerate. She continues to go above and beyond to help students feel at home when they are away from home. Deb is always willing to jump in and help whenever and wherever help is needed. And that's true, you can see her in multiple locations at Dow High on any given day. Deb continues to demonstrate a strong commitment to our students. She always represents Midland Public Schools well in the community, and her hard work and dedication are appreciated. She sets a great example for her coworkers. She's dependable, ambitious, and a creative responder. She is passionate about the well-being of students and is beyond reliable. Deb is absolutely a shining star. Congratulations.
Thank you. So happy for you.
That wasn't so bad, was it, Deb? We appreciate you being here. Our second shining star isn't with us tonight, and interestingly, another member of our team who doesn't always like being in the spotlight. But I'm going to read about Andrew Fry. Andrew joined our team in 2003 as an English teacher at HH Dow High School, the position he currently holds in the district. He earned his bachelor's degree in education at Michigan State University and his master's in English Language Arts and Literature from Central Michigan University. Andrew was nominated by students and colleagues, and here are some of the comments. Mr. Fry's classroom is always safe and welcoming for students. He is kind and patient with students. I had to take an exam in the office during a difficult time, and Mr. Fry made a point to stop by and check on me. He is an amazing teacher. From a colleague, Andrew always works to design and deliver lessons for his students to meet their needs. He has a professional desire to continually improve his skill set and is open to input from his colleagues. In addition to his professional drive, he fosters a nurturing and fun classroom environment for all students, regardless of their skill level. And finally, Andrew considers it his responsibility to meet the needs of students and to meet them where they are while still maintaining high expectations for students and for himself. He is a tremendous asset to the Dow High community. Congratulations to Andrew, and we'll make sure that he gets his certificate and token of appreciation.
Thank you, Penny. Next up, we have item 3.2, Spotlight on Excellence, Plymouth Elementary School. Margaret Doan and Erin Pung. Welcome, ladies, and thank you.
All right, well, thank you. As Scott mentioned, I'm Margaret Doan. I'm the principal at Plymouth Elementary, and presenting with me today is Erin Pung, thank you, our family intervention specialist. We want to thank you guys for having us present today. As you can imagine, whenever Penny says, hey, it's your turn to present at the board, it's that nerve-wracking feeling, and then we kind of calm down, get our team together, and we say, wow, like, really, this is an honor because we are doing a lot of really cool things at Plymouth, and this gives us the opportunity to kind of brag, which we like to do. So today, we're going to be presenting about our Positive Behavior Intervention Support Systems, or PBIS, as you might commonly hear it called. This is something we've been really working on developing over the last two years at Plymouth, and we feel like we're in a good spot with it. So the basis of our PBIS system is really our Plymouth Spirit tickets, which you can see presented on the screen. Erin Pung, our family intervention specialist, and Whitney Jacobs, our PYP coach, created these tickets a couple of years ago to really bring that learner profile to life for our students. They developed these as a way for students to demonstrate the learner profile attributes throughout the day. So you can see on the tickets, students can be recognized for showing care, being principled, being incredibly open-minded, being risk-takers, interactive communicators, or thinkers. And if you look at the first letter down the front of the Spirit ticket, that makes the acronym SPIRIT, hence the word "Spirit Tickets." Throughout the day, students have opportunities to earn these. All of our adults have the ability to hand out Spirit tickets, which empowers our lunchtime staff, our teaching staff, our auxiliary staff, anybody who catches a student following the Spirit attributes. And then, once students receive this, they bring it to the office, and then it's entered in a grade-level drawing, and each week on the announcements, we pull a ticket, and then the students can get a golden coin for our book vending machine. Now, Erin, we'll go into more detail about the book vending machine and the role that plays in the system, but I really wanted to take this opportunity to share a unique example that just happened after we had already decided we were going to be talking about this. We were in the office, just kind of, you know, standing around, doing whatever, and this kid comes flying by the office, and his eyes are wide, and he's clearly excited, and he flies in the office. And again, a lot of our kids don't really listen if conversation is happening, they just put it out there. He's like, I did it! I finally got a Spirit ticket! And we're like, buddy, great work, you know, we'll take the ticket, like we do with all kids. We took it, you know, got him back to class, we're super excited, and then we opened the ticket, and we realized really quickly that, oh, this wasn't one of our Spirit tickets. It was that small piece of paper, which you can see on the screen. Come to find out, he was in art class, and the teacher was giving directions. He was listening. Some other first-grade peers were not listening, and a little girl in his class recognized that he was being principled, and he was listening. So she took it upon herself to make him a Spirit ticket, and then presented it to him at the end of art class. We were all like, oh, oh my gosh! Because that was a huge moment for us, where we realized, like, what we're doing is actually working. Not only are they getting that positive recognition from staff members, but they're internalizing those behaviors and then taking action on their own. So this was a huge, perfect moment for us. With that said, I'm going to have Erin Pung pick over and talk a little bit more about the book vending machine and its role in our system.
Yeah, so, the book vending machine, I'll give you a little bit of history on that. We were able to purchase that through Title I funding prior to the 2023-2024 school year. And then, working with our amazing PTO, we make, they make sure that we have enough funding to be able to stock the vending machines, so when the Spirit ticket winners are able to go and draw a book out, it's fully stocked with all the popular titles. That gets the kids really excited. And the vending machine has been a really nice incentive for the students. They really have bought into it, they get excited. Oftentimes, we will see them just stopped in the hallway, looking at the vending machine, what's new in there, talking to staff, students, whoever might be walking by, what book they might want to pick, if their name gets drawn that week, giving recommendations to others of books that they've read. So it's really fun to watch, to see them get excited about it, and just kind of have that tangible thing that they can see and get excited about. So, in terms of the process, Mrs. Doan mentioned that Spirit tickets are collected throughout the week, and then on Wednesdays, we draw one ticket from each grade level, and along with, along with the reason that they received it and their name gets announced over the announcements, then they're asked to come down to the book vending machine. Once they're at the vending machine, they receive that gold coin that you can see there, and it's kind of neat because it just works for the vending machine. A lot of kids will say, can I use this somewhere else? And it's like, no, it's special for the vending machine. But the process is just the same as it would be if you're out in public and using a vending machine to get a snack or whatnot. They insert the coin, and then they're able to make that selection. Once they hit enter, the book kind of spirals forward, and it drops down then into the bin, where they're able to grab that out. And so that gets them really excited, too, to just kind of see that process and know that they get that. Along with the book, they also get a bookmark that was created, so it identifies them as a Plymouth Spirit ticket winner. We want it a way so that if a child comes home with a book, and they say, I won this today, and the parents are like, great, for what? If it was anything like, like my students, especially when they were younger, they'd be like, I don't know, you know? So it gives them a way to say, oh, Plymouth Spirit ticket winner for the week. So they get, they get that along with their book. Once, the final kind of step for the students in their experience is that all of the winners for the week come together, and they get their picture taken. That then gets put on a bulletin board in the main hallway. The first time, it'll go onto the current month that we're in, and all the Spirit ticket winners for that month are displayed on the one bulletin board. Once the month has ended, that moves over to another bulletin board in the main hallway still. And it's, it's fun to see that grow throughout the year, and it just kind of helps to keep that acknowledgement going. Students like to take a look at it, find themselves, find their friends, and like I said, it just kind of helps keep that excitement going about the process. So now, Mrs. Doan, do you want to tell them about what happens to all those Spirit tickets that get collected but aren't necessarily drawn as a weekly winner?
Well, thank you, Mrs. Pung. I'd love to. As you know, not every kid can be polled for the week, and so we do take all of the grade-level Spirit tickets, and we put them in a whole-school container. This whole-school container is displayed right outside in our main hallway, so that every kid who goes by there can see, like, the progress of the school, and even if they didn't win, how their contribution is helping the whole school. Once we fill up that container, which has been happening about once a semester, they get a whole-school reward, so we can celebrate the good things they're doing. So far, we've had Jeff the Magician come, the staff favorite, Cider and Cinema Day, and then Movie and Snack Day, where they all joined in for a school-wide movie. Right now, we're nearing that time where our container is pretty full, and so we've kind of been brainstorming some ideas about kind of that end-of-the-year celebration, because we think they'll hit it right about then. So definitely getting in one more this year, and excited to do different celebrations in the future. So, yeah, our PBS, PBIS program is continuing to grow at Plymouth. It's amazing to see how engaged our students are, and not only just in earning the rewards, but also recognizing positive behavior in their peers. We're really excited about it as it continues, and we thank you for your time today, and we're absolutely thrilled to answer any questions that you might have.
I don't have any questions, but I think this is incredibly cool, and I can only imagine how excited my kids would be if they got a Spirit ticket, or even better, if they got to win a book.
Yeah.
Do you think you might be able to give us, I love the example that you gave us, it was wonderful. Any other examples or reactions like that that you've gotten from your students, or maybe talk about some of the behavioral changes that you've, you've seen as a whole throughout the building?
Yeah, and I just want to share, as Erin mentioned, when kids, if you're an adult in the hallway by the book vending machine, and there is a kid, like, you are going to be polled in. Today, I was stuck, like, just walking, and a kid's like, ugh, I just really want that Iron Dragon book.
Did get stuck against the glass?
Yeah, and I'm like, oh, buddy, keep working hard, you know what I mean? But they're just into it. So that's a good example of that. I know that we had the varsity leadership kids over to do some reading to our kids the other day, and again, Mrs. Albright was like, tell me about this book vending machine. So we just grabbed a kid in the hallway, I said, tell her about it, and they can all speak to it. So it's really exciting because it is meaningful for them. And Erin, again, in her position, kind of handles that day-to-day behavioral stuff, so if you want to just kind of speak on that?
Yeah, so I don't have any necessarily data that I can give you. But just an experience in the amount of kids that I see, I feel like the amount of referrals that just kind of come down, that's kind of in the moment, you know, Johnny had a, had a tough moment, can he come down, have really decreased. And like you said, we see the excitement, we see, there was a student that historically would maybe need some extra support throughout the day, and I remember one time he came down and he said, I got two Spirit tickets turned in today by two different staff, and he just got really excited, and so we just really encouraged that, and we just lifted up, and it's like, oh my gosh, that's great, buddy, and, you know, keep that up, and so they just, they've just really taken it on, I feel.
We actually also had a student coming to present with us tonight, but she had a 101.7 fever midday. We're like, of course. But she is a book winner eight times, so she is like a reigning champ. At one point, we were kind of like, ooh, we got to simmer that down a little bit, but it's working for her.
Any other questions, comments? Wonderful, wonderful presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And that will bring us into 3.3, Teachers of Tomorrow. Chelsea Berg and Katie Sterns.
And Chris.
And company.
Future teachers, that's who they are.
Thank you for joining us tonight.
I do have to say, before we start on this, we were at Plymouth a couple of weeks ago, and Katie and I got sucked in by the book vending machine before we left. We were walking out, and we were like, what is that?
Yeah, yeah, so we need to talk about getting out of our school.
Yes. All right, so we're really excited to be here today, when Penny, again, sent us the invitation to come talk, when we were able to bring some of our students to talk about the great work we've been doing with Teachers of Tomorrow, so they share with our first year.
Yeah, so, and I'm Katie Sterns, teacher at Midland High, graduate of Midland High, oh, she left, I'm a graduate from Midland High. And, yeah, and this is my partner in crime.
Chelsea Berg from Dow High.
Okay, so, Teachers of Tomorrow, this is the year one of this, I don't, I'm telling you, right? Year one, okay. Sorry, just used to the class. Oh, yes, of course. Yeah, 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 absolutely. So this is the first year of this class. Last year, it was a club. We weren't ready to launch it after we just kind of wanted to do a year of, of the club, and the club was really successful. And then, so this is the first year, it's Sixth Hour at both Midland High and Dow High, and it's, comes from a grant, the Future Proud Michigan Educators Grant, and it's open to juniors and seniors primarily, just for some logistical reasons, and we just thought, just maturity-wise, this is a good spot for, for this group of, of students. So, structurally, this is still me, right? Structurally, the first semester of this class is just a traditional daily schedule. We meet Monday through Friday, Sixth Hour, History of Ed, just some other general topics, and we, we meet like a regular school day. This semester, kid, the, the students are placed with a mentor teacher three times a week. So we see them on Monday and Friday for a regular class time, but Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, after Fifth Hour, they leave and head to all of the elementaries and middle schools. We also have a student at St. John's, St. Bridget, and Carpenter Pre-Primary as well. And then, on Fridays, we kind of debrief, you know, how'd the week go, and then Mondays, usually, we kind of give them something to focus on, their journaling, and we had over 63 teachers say, I want to be a mentor teacher. So that was a wonderful problem to have. And then, placing students with the mentors was sort of like March Madness, right? Like, we had a bracket, like, okay, who's can go where, partly just because of who was interested in teaching what, but it has really worked out great. The feedback from our mentor teachers has been phenomenal, like, just phenomenal. So, so far, so good. And then, they will go through the first week in May, so it'll be about a 13-week experience with their mentors, and then we have them until May 16, when the seniors are done. And then Chelsea has a few juniors as well, so she'll be able to hang out with them a little bit longer. So, yeah, yeah.
All right, so I'm just going to talk a little bit more about what we've been doing with them, both in that first semester, and then the two days a week that we've been getting to see them. So like Katie mentioned, we started out with a lot of the classroom culture, so how do you build that in the classroom management? And I think that was kind of a cool, full-circle experience for them, because they have those moments where they're like, that's why my teacher does that. Or looking at their classes, and even just their whole-school experience, not just their current teachers. And then we did move into some history of education, and then we looked at different education systems around the world. That was a fun research project. We played a fun game of guess the school lunch from which country it came from, and so it was interesting just to get to kind of compare all of that stuff. And then we moved into some of the topics that are a little bit more aligned to what you'd be taking in a beginning-level education class at the college level, so looking at the different child developmental theories and how those factor into education. We also shifted to some social-emotional learning, and we were very lucky. I was one of the first people in the secondary cohort for the RISE training last summer, and as soon as I did that, I knew we needed that with this class. And so all of the MPS, SEL specialists worked together to give an abridged training, so they got like, the three-day training in like, an hour and a half. But they came together, and we actually had both schools together in the Dow High Media Center, and they were able to get that training. And then they've been able to use that same language with many of their mentor teachers who've also had the training, and so that has been kind of a cool experience to pull all of those things together. And then what we're currently working on are teaching methods and strategies, and looking at how their mentor teachers do those things, and we actually just started a project where they're getting to kind of design a lesson of their own, that they're going to teach their peers as their students, at least for this time, but giving that experience as well. So when we pull this content, we have a really great curriculum from the Future Proud Michigan Educators Grant program, but they designed it for a semester-long course, so we've had to fill a lot of that in, but it's been very easy to find things to supplement it, and a lot of it is really just us finding things we wish we would have known before we got into the college things, like, for example, a couple of weeks ago, we all learned how to say the word pedagogy, and I'm like, you're going to hear that word for the rest of your life, so you might as well learn how to say it now. But it's just those things that we wish we would have had in our experiences before we got really into the thick of things. So, that's one more thing we have gotten to do. Last week, we got to go on a field trip, and so we got to go to Wayne State University last week for the Educators Rising Conference. It was the second annual conference. It was put on by MDE. Katie and I got to go last year, but with just having a club, we didn't have a group of students to take yet, so we just went and checked it out, and we said, next year, we're going to be here with our classes, and so it was very cool to get to, to be there and have them all together. So they got to pick different sessions, it was very much like a professional development type thing, but there were also some keynote speakers, so they got to hear from Dr. Rice, the State Secretary of Education, and I think it was just a really good learning experience for everybody, and they also really like to be together. It's a lot of fun. It's our third time now, we did the RISE training this trip, and then we had a presentation by Joy on Equity and Inclusion back in December. So, so that's enough from us. We brought you some of our students in real life, but we also have some pictures of many of our students with their mentor teachers for you, but they're the ones that can really tell you about their experiences in the class, but especially out in their mentor classrooms.
Should we just start with questions, or do they?
They're just going to tell you a little bit about their experience, and if you have questions, all of us.
All right, so I did not ever originally want to be a teacher, but last year, I made the mistake of volunteering to help read to students with Ms. Sterns, because she needed some kids for that, and now I am sucked into this. Dedicated, I guess. I originally wanted to be in an English class for my mentor teacher, but now I'm in Life Management instead. It kind of did not work out for English classes, they all have Prep Sixth Hour, unfortunately, but I really like how hands-on it is. My mentor teacher is Ms. Valley at the Middle School of Northeast, of Northeast Middle School, the one that you guys are hopefully going to be tearing down in sooner than eight years. But, it's been an interesting experience, that's for sure, because I have mainly eighth graders, and they can't seem to grasp the concept that I am also still in school, and now I know how mothers feel every time they have to rally kids together. It is just, it's cool to kind of see how teachers seem to micromanage a bunch of different kids at once, and all these different teaching methods. They're very flexible, and that is inspirational, honestly, because that is something I have struggled with when it comes to people, and so I like how it's given me this experience. I feel like I've gotten a lot better at communicating and putting myself out there, and I like to help people, so that's why I've become interested in this career, because by no means should I ever be in the medical field. Do not like needles, do not like blood. So I think I'm going to let this move on to one of the other three before I start rambling.
So, my name's Olivia Duzuski. I'm a junior, so I may have a different experience being an assistant teacher compared to some others, but I also never thought I was going to be a teacher. I really enjoy the art field, and I was thinking to myself, how am I going to incorporate this into my future and a stable career? Well, I thought teaching, because that's what my mother suggested to me originally, and I thought, I'd like an older age group, so middle school is what I requested when it came to this opportunity. And it's been great getting to know the kids and doing something I love while helping others, so, I don't know, it's been great.
Hi, I'm Abby. I'm also a junior, and I can't drive, so I'm thankful for the bus system, but I work with lower elementary school, which I never, I knew I wanted to do a job with kids, but I never knew what I wanted to do initially, because I wanted to be like arts and stuff, because I can't think of a life without drawing and stuff. And then, when I got placed into my placement, I love how the kids think I'm like so amazing, just because I can draw a dog, which makes me really happy, and just being with them and seeing their smiling faces makes me really want to be more of a teacher. But even, like, I don't even have to be an art teacher, because I just realize, teaching them and seeing their thinking faces happen makes me so happy, and like, I love cursive, and being able to teach them cursive makes me happy, because I feel like cursive is dying, and we need to be teaching it. And I just want to be a teacher, because I want to spread joy and stuff, and I'm so happy this program is a thing, because I don't, I would have never known what being with kids would be like if I didn't have this program. So I'm, and I'm thankful that Julie brought me to the club last year, because now I get to do this, and I got to meet Ms. Berg and stuff, and I'm so thankful for it.
I'm a senior at Midland High. I have always wanted to go into teaching, but I started volunteering at LaPierce's Special Needs Group, so that made me bring my interest out into becoming a special education teacher. So I want to be an early childhood special education teacher. I've always liked helping kids and just hanging out with, like, younger kids, it's always been like really nice. I'm paired with Ms. Callahar at Central Park. There's a few kids in that class that shouldn't have been put in that class together, but we make it work. It's been really nice getting to, like, know kids and getting to, like, be a special part of their lives, because I feel like as we get older, we kind of just like... because I feel like as we get older, we kind of just, like, speak, like, pick certain people in our lives to, like, spend time with and stuff, and they just all, like, want to be with you and spend time with you. So it's been really nice, and I love the class. It's fun. Our field trip was really fun. Gave us a tour of college life, too.
Yeah. We had to leave very early, but the students were fairly, um, I was impressed.
It was, I was late.
So do you guys want to come up in case they have questions for you or for us? We've had a lot of guest speakers.
All right. So I have a comment, and maybe a question, I don't know. That full-circle moment that Mrs. Berg referenced earlier, that's going to happen again later in life, when you say, "Oh, that's why my parents did that." Spoiler alert, it's coming, I promise. It really makes me feel good that you guys are here and that our future is really bright. This is a wonderful, wonderful program. The only thing I would say, only other thing I would say is, remember, teachers inspire the world. They really, really do. And I could see that in all of you when you were up here sharing your stories with us. So I appreciate you being here. Thank you very much. And I'm sure we have other comments.
So I love hearing about this program every single time it comes up. And I, I think it's a full-circle moment for y'all, right? For, for the teachers watching your young students learn these things. One of the questions that I have that I know and really appreciate about seeing tonight is you collaborating, right, between Midland High and Dow High? And kind of building some of those relationships, as well as relationships out with the elementary and middle schools? I think that's really fantastic. One of the things that you didn't mention tonight was how you've collaborated to develop the curriculum and the teaching. And so would you mind sharing with the board and the audience about that?
So it's really been a natural connection for it to be the two of us. I'm going to embarrass Katie, but when I got hired for Midland Public Schools, Katie was my mentor teacher. So talk about the full-circle thing. But that also has really made our dynamic very easy and made that collaboration something that is a lot simpler, I think, than when you're having the cross-school collaborations. But, so we've, we've just worked with the curriculum. We've had, we've met over the summer. We usually meet at least once a month, but I think we talk to each other basically every weekday. At least once, we, we learned without even asking that we had the same prep, because we'd be like, "Oh, we're on the document at the same time." That's weird. And so second hour, we spend a lot of time talking, and then sixth hour and after school, but it's just been a really natural thing. And some lesson kind of just tends to be something I take on, and then the next time it's her, and we share stuff back and forth. And so it's just been, it's really easy. She always says we're building the plane while we're flying it this year, and that does feel very accurate, but, but it's worked out well.
Well, and you mentioned the, we did get a really good, like, units from the, we went to a conference last fall, they didn't have it, the fall of '23, right? And gave us a great scaffolding, and, and we checked it out, and it was, it was good. It was good. But we really, this summer, divided it up. And then, "Let's take a look at these," and then it's just started to mold it into our own. And then, we've already talked about, "Okay, we're going to switch this next year and have this." But, yeah, it's just, it's just been a great relationship. And then the kids have been awesome together. I mean, we've gotten together at least three, two or three times. And, you know, they have the same goals, and they're sharing. I could hear funny stories on the bus about their classroom and this classroom. It's just, it's been pretty great. So, you know, luckily, yeah, we have the same prep, and, and that's been really, really helpful. So, yeah, I don't know if that answers the question.
So this is the first year of the program. How many applicants did you have for the program?
So at first, we just kind of opened it. Anybody could sign up for it. And at first, we had 46 at Midland High. And I was like, "Yeah, we're not running 46, because we don't have that space." So then I said, "Let's, let's limit it to juniors and seniors." And then I can't remember what the number was. It was still, like, in the upper 30s, I think, at that point. Now, I knew when we do scheduling in the spring, you know, things are going to change. So then, because we knew it was just going to be one section. So then I said, "Can we just look at seniors? Let's see what seniors signed up." And we had 21, 22. Somebody got a co-op job halfway through, so he left to work at Ace Hardware. But anyway, but, so we have 22. And I, right now, just initial numbers, that's where we are for next year as well. But again, limiting it only to seniors, just for logistical reasons, you know, for that first year for us. Yeah, yeah.
And we were pretty similar. We had our initial, we didn't have quite as many to start out with. We had about 30, but we had a lot of sophomores. And when I spoke to them initially, and I was like, "Well, would you be able to drive by, like, January of next year?" And they were all like, "Nope." And at that point, we weren't sure what transportation was going to look like, so we didn't want to make them promises we couldn't keep. And so by the time we narrowed it down, I started out with 16. And then I had one, a senior, that graduated early, so she only completed the first semester of the course. And so I'm at 14, 15 right now. And seeing the numbers when I talked to counselors the other day, running about the same for next year as well.
Great. Are you able to help with placement, college placement for seniors who want to get into teaching programs?
We, we hope to be able to offer articulated credit. That was one of the things that the, one of the presentations that I went to. Did you go to that one, too? No, at the conference last week. And we know it's something we're exploring, so were they be able to actually get college credit for this class at certain universities? But obviously, the class, I think, in itself is going to look good when they're, when it comes to apply for the Colleges of Education in whatever program that they're looking at. That is one of the later units in the programming from the state. And so Katie probably won't really get to it with her seniors, but something I can look at with my juniors, once the seniors leave us and we have those last couple of weeks of school together.
Ladies, thank you so much.
I think I'll say the same thing, though. I think I'll say the same thing that I said when I got to see a presentation earlier in the year, is that you're thanking us, but this is really self-serving for us. Because we would love for you to come back to Midland Public Schools and be a teacher here. So, thank you for being in the program. Thank you for being excited about it, and please come back.
Thank you. Oh, you want to stay for more? Great. They're not leaving. What about our students? You're the boss. Okay, that brings us up to item 3.4, Facility Improvement Bond Proposal Update. And I'm going to handle that tonight. To date, we have been really working hard to connect with as many people as we possibly can. We have conducted, and I say "we," the board, along with the administrative team, have conducted more than 30 presentations for community groups, parents, and staff. We've conducted an open community session on February 27th at Central Auditorium. The administrative team and board members onsite stayed after the session for almost an hour to ensure that all of the questions were addressed. The meetings are designed to provide factual details about the bond proposal and to ensure transparency with the community and to provide members of the community an opportunity to get their questions answered. We have more open community sessions planned. On March 25th, and this will all be out there, at 6:00 PM in the Little Theater at Northeast Middle School, and I believe that's going to involve a quick tour of Northeast, Penny, if I'm not mistaken? Okay. The next meeting on March 27th at 10:00 AM is going to be a virtual meeting. For anybody who hasn't been able to physically attend a meeting, that link will be made available in short order. April 15th at noon at the MPS, here at the MPS Administration Center, that's going to be in-person, as well as a Zoom-in option. Just want to say to visit the website. If you don't, if you have questions, look at the website. Take the time to go through the FAQs. Take the time to read the work orders for the individual buildings. Get the facts about the bonds, about the rates, about the effect that it may have on your tax bill. And again, if you have questions, just ask. Reach out to any one of us, reach out to any one of them. We will all take time to talk. The site, as you know, serves as a central hub of information, providing detailed project descriptions, financial breakdowns, and our presentation materials that we use at almost every meeting. You can get a copy of it online, if we don't get, hand out copies at the meeting itself. Again, go to the source. Don't believe everything you see online. Don't believe everything you hear. Don't believe what I tell you. Go to the source and get the facts. Be an informed voter, and tell as many people as you can to get out and vote. This is a really important issue for Midland Public Schools, so please get the information you need and, and vote accordingly. That's all I have to say as far as a bond update. Penny, is there anything you may want to add? Okay. All right. That will bring us into item number four, Request to Address the Board. And first up on the list is Dave Romanesco. Good evening, thank you for joining us.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity. I've spoken with a number of you privately on these kinds of subjects, so I appreciate the opportunity. My wife, excuse me, my wife and I have been in Midland for 51 years, and we have voted for every school bond issue. This, however, we will vote against for three reasons. Central Park Elementary STEM School was the 2015 $125 million bond issue. Sadly, Central Park has a proficiency of 44%. And as a retired gallery scientist at Dow Corning, I know what STEM is, and 44% proficiency is not. This is an unfulfilled promise. Secondly, $0.285 billion is what you're asking for. And with interest, that's nearly a half a billion dollars. It's just simply too large. I do support a school north of the highway. We need that. There's 600, 700 students there. The third point is Northeast, in my view, and the view of a construction engineer who walked through it, is that there are decades left in Northeast Intermediate, or Northeast Middle School, excuse me. The sad thing is, is that the base engineering data seems to be unavailable, which is astounding to me when you're going to spend $100 million on a building. Moving forward, Midland Public Schools' Inspiring Excellence. We've talked, Penny, John, Phil isn't here. We've talked about proficiency in the past. My local school, Chestnut Hill, has the lowest proficiency at 43%. The highest is Seabird at 62%. This is a graphic of what has occurred since 2015. 63% proficiency for third graders in 2015. The low was 48% in 2023, and it's now 51%. That, that's surprising to me. But let's compare that to Hemeter Elementary in Saginaw Township. Hemeter Elementary has 82% proficiency. Webster Elementary in Livonia has 93% proficiency. This is on the same test, and the Michigan data is where all of this has come from. As you know, your primary responsibility is proficiency. Why is that? Well, 65% roughly of high school students do not graduate from college. They expect to have a career as well. But if they have 40% proficiency, no lawyer in Judge Lotterbox's office or at Hemlock Semiconductor or Blasey Electric, you wouldn't want to hire people. So we need to improve proficiency. That is your primary job. And you need to find out why others, the 10 that you follow, or 50 that you follow every year, why they have so much higher.
Thank you.
We need to do better.
Mr. Bonadie's.
Greetings. Last year, I put up a cartoon about how the various bonds were layering upon each other year by year. In January, Phil said that a plot of the real data was going to be put on the website. Did not happen. At the Central Intermediate Presentation, Auditorium Presentation, I had a pleasant conversation with Ms. Ringold, and she said she had seen that data. So I dug around, had a great conversation with Ms. Womack, and finally asked for Form 3881, Your Bond Application Form to Treasury. Thanks, Phil, for your lack of action. It provided a goldmine, if you're watching. My wife had an interesting discussion with the State Treasury, Treasury Department to understand that your bond, what your bond language really means. Your first line contains the verbiage quote, "Issue its general unlimited tax bonds," unquote, which translates to, "Regardless of the circumstances, the property owners of MPS District are on the hook." The 3881 form anticipates that for the next 10 years, MPS will have access to an interest rate of 4.75%. Does anybody really believe, believe this? We are in a recession, so doubtful, it's doubtful we will have access to those low-interest rates for a decade. Higher interest rates for Series III and IV would dramatically increase the total cost of this bond and drive it well north of a half a billion dollars. And you have switched from 15-year bonds to 25-year bonds to keep the mills down, but at increased interest costs. So if you look at page one of what you have in front of you, that's for the video, that is the growth rate from your form. It's, this scatter is supposed to tell us what the growth rate over the next 25 years is, which is 1.65%, the orange line on your handup. If you pull out 2003, 5, 6, and 9, the two big negatives and the two big positives, to be fair, the latter three is the inflation from the housing bubble and the global financial crisis. The rest of the data gives us a growth rate of 1.03, or only 62% of what you anticipate. As you layer the 2025 bond on top of 2015, you appear to be on a path of addiction to bonds covering foundational expectations, like buses and roofs. The public is not ready to put their property in a perpetual bondage to your wish list. Finally, again from your paperwork, 2025 Bond Series 1, you are going to charge a portion of the cost of the May election to the bond. So you are taking $71,000 reimbursement from the bond proceeds, and we will pay 25 years of interest, so it's over $121,000. While this may be legal, I am not happy paying for the privilege of being fleeced for 25 years. For the voters, your silence is your consent. Thank you.
Thank you. Bernita.
Good evening.
Good evening. Bernita Bonadie's. I've heard the presentation of this bond proposal, both here and at several public venues. We have seen the graphic for the target utilization of 85%, showing how overcrowded our schools are, especially the K-5 buildings. So I took a look at page 95 of the 3881 that Joe mentioned. I found all of your five-year projections for building capacities and enrollments at each of the buildings. This is where it got very interesting. Our current utilization at the K-5 schools is 93%. After we add this nice, state-of-the-art educational facility for our north-of-the-U.S. 10 little learners, we will be at a 94% utilization rate. Wait, what? You mean we will spend approximately $91.5 million to build a new building and have a worse utilization rate for K-5 buildings? In fact, the new elementary shows a 98% utilization rate. So I looked at the projections for all of the buildings in the district. Our current utilization rate is 86% when comparing capacity to enrollment. Your projections show that the district utilization rate for all buildings will be 94% at the end of the projects. Wait, how is this possible? We are to support this bond proposal and go from 86% to 94% utilization rate. You told us 85% was the goal. How is this board okay with supporting and presenting this bond proposal to the taxpayers with a 94% utilization rate? You are asking the taxpayers to take on a half-billion-dollar debt for the next 34 years for this bond proposal. Let me fill in the gaps for the public. You are reducing the building capacity on all but one in the projections. In fact, there is a loss of 1,117 from the current buildings, while adding 600 of capacity... 600 of capacity at the new elementary. So there is a net loss of 517 in capacity across the district, and the utilization rate, I remind you, is 98% at that new elementary. So why does it look like we are gaining nothing in reduced class sizes and simultaneously reducing our building capacities for our claimed increasing enrollment? Look to the non-mandated goal of a pre-K the district is forcing on the taxpayers. This is a desired program of some of your biggest business partners that we hear about at these meetings, like Dow. How did taxpayers providing K-12 education morph to building preschools? So you present some things you claim are the problem, but never tell us how these things will be better. I think it's because you aren't really fixing some of the main concerns of the community. This is a sleight-of-hand bond proposal that we will be paying on long after you are off the board. Again, please vote. Your silence is your consent. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Dora Nuss Warren. Hi, Dora. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me. Can you hear me all right here?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm a little nervous, so if I stumble, bear with me. I'm Dora Nuss Warren, and my son Ben is nine. He loves his dog more than anything else in the world, and he does goofy dances that can make anyone laugh, and he protects his little brother passionately. He's a great kid, but he's also autistic and has ADHD, which means he has some challenging behaviors at home and at school. Last year, I enrolled him in Seibert, and over the fall semester, he was suspended five times. That's a lot. I decided to homeschool him instead. The experience got me thinking, reading, and researching about school suspension. Here are some of the things I found out. In 2021, the American Institute of Research found that suspensions led to almost universally negative consequences intended to affect minority and disabled students at a disproportionately high rate. This study showed that suspension resulted in fewer instructional hours for these students, a higher dropout rate, and increased undesirable behavior. This was certainly the case for my son. He missed a lot of class because his, because of his suspensions, and fell even farther behind than he already was. He continued to get in trouble and eventually dropped out of public education. So I wondered how many other students Midland Public Schools suspended per year. The CDRC says that our school district suspends 2% of pupils. If the student population is around 7,500, that's 150 kids affected. How are our neighbors doing? Both the school districts of the city of Saginaw and Bay County suspended less than 1%. Locally, our schools are suspending nearly twice the number of students as these other districts. That means there's room for improvement. Fortunately, there are proven ways to reduce suspensions. First, schools can get rid of zero tolerance policies. Second, they can participate in training for parapros, teachers, and administrators. Some effective training programs are collaborative problem-solving as described by Ross Green, conscious discipline by Becky Bailey, and restorative justice through the NCORJ. My acquaintance, Zach Morris of Alive at Learn, who I met at an autism conference, works as a consultant for schools to reduce suspensions and make public, public edu, ah, sorry, public education more accessible to children with non-stereotypical presentations of autism. When Ben was in the public classroom, his teachers were some of the most compassionate, helpful people. They took hours of their personal free time to meet with me and accommodate schoolwork for my son. I worry that adding training to an already full workload might be too much for them. I think that administrators at the highest levels could benefit from learning more about these concepts and then pass them down to teachers. Parapros are also often the first people to respond to difficult behaviors, and so they could particularly benefit. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Here's a list of the resources I mentioned.
Thank you. Okay, next on the list is Elizabeth Hetrick. Hey, Elizabeth, thank you.
When I heard Dora was coming, I wanted to come too. I have two children in this district that should be Midland Public School students, but unfortunately are not. My two kids are autistic. They are 13 and 11 years old, and we had some very poor experiences with Midland Public Schools. In fact, for my son, we tried four times. At the first school during the pilot year at Central Park, I was first told, when I asked for supports for him, that he was too young to receive an IEP, that IEPs were not available for kindergartners. This was told to me by the principals of the school, both of them. I continued to ask for IEP evaluations and support before Christmas break, and was told that it wasn't a good time to begin evaluation. The teacher was about to go on vacation. During the time, the many months, August to December, I was asking for IEP evaluations, my child was denied recess, and when I said that he shouldn't be denied recess because of disability-related behaviors, I was told that recess was not a guarantee for any student, so why should he be different? I also sent in medication with the legal forms required for that medication and gave copies to the school nurse, the school office, and his teacher. He was not given his medications and almost lost sight in one eye. It wasn't until I threatened to sue the school that they located his medication. He was also denied the right to attend class parties, citing his stimming behavior during circle time as being inappropriate conduct by playing with the Velcro on his shoes. He was suspended repeatedly. I took him out of school, and we tried again the next year. We tried at Chestnut Hill. At Chestnut Hill, before the IEP evaluations were completed, the principal told me that regardless of what the IEP evaluation said, he would never qualify for an aid. She was not going to use her budget that way. He was denied access to lunch because he couldn't eat in the main cafeteria for sensory reasons, and he was told it wasn't convenient to feed him lunch. He lost 15% of his body weight, and CPS was called when he lost so much weight that he had to be put on a special diet, where we had to pull him out of school three days a week for feeding therapy. I was told I couldn't send him with headphones because it would make him stand out, and I was told to try to get him on screens more, because he'd blend in with other kids more if he could talk about Mario and Nickelodeon instead of about fossils and dinosaurs. He was also suspended repeatedly. So we tried at Plymouth. At Plymouth, he was denied an appropriate curriculum and often given things three grade levels above his level. When he couldn't complete them, he was told that the other kids could have movies and ice cream, but he couldn't. He was also locked up in an isolation room without his shoes, where urine was dripping from the walls from another child who had already urinated in there early in the day, and even though it's against state law, the door was barred with a chair put under it to hold him in the classroom. I pulled him out. We went back to Central Park. They promised me things had changed and there was a new administration. There, he was locked in a small closet area. It used to be, I'm sorry, I'm going to keep talking. It was supposed to be a storage closet, but the superintendent at the time told me that kids getting ESA services needed to be motivated to get back to the traditional classroom, and by denying them sunlight, they would be more compliant. He was denied inclusion, and from September to January, never once stepped foot in a mainstream classroom, despite being gifted, highly verbal, and capable. I was told there just wasn't staff to take him to a mainstream classroom. From August to January, he had not a single lesson in mathematics, and when I offered to do it at home, they told me they couldn't be bothered to send home the curriculum for me to work on it with him at home. He was then denied consistency, and after finally succeeding a little bit at Central Park, I was told that because his teacher was moving to the middle school, that I should transfer him from third grade to middle school. At this point, he was 55 pounds and about 3 and 1/2 feet tall. He would have spent his middle school experience locked in a locker. But I was told that because the special ed programs and the autism classrooms bounce around from school to school so often, it was better to just pair him with a special ed teacher rather than a school or a program. There is no consistency for autistic children in Midland Public Schools, and there is no compassion, and there is no hope, and that needs to change.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Next on the list is Bill Domina, Domina? I'm sorry, Bill. Okay.
Try and stay focused. Let me start by saying that there are parts of this bond that I do support. However, I have some concerns. I have seen posts, both pro and con, in our news sources and social media. The most common cry is disinformation, so I just want to encourage everyone, and especially the Midland Daily News, to use the MPS's data in that Form 3881 that was submitted to the Department of Treasury as the key reference, so we have, we have data. First, I was shocked when I heard that the $285 million bond was actually estimated to cost $487 million over the term of the bond. I was quite surprised. I also note that on, that the 3.9 millage rate is only for the first year. That's on top of page seven also, and can increase significantly as needed to cover the actual cost. So taxpayers need to understand when they vote, the long-term impact on their property taxes, and decide, and decide. I've also seen that the MPS budget has increased by 42% from $79.5 million to $113 million since 2019, and our academic scores have not increased proportionately over that time. I've heard that, that we need new classroom furniture at significant cost to be able to teach according to the latest academic trends. If we have been using the latest methods at Central, then I don't see the results in the proficiency scores. Introducing free pre-K that is not means-tested is a big driver in the high building utilization rates and costs. I believe that pre-K is currently planned for four-year-olds. What about when the program expands to include three-year-olds? We know that the lure of free pre-K will draw many more non-property taxpayers into MPS from other districts and not have to pay for that. Looking at the tens of millions for accommodating the infrastructure needed to bring in the pre-K, I have to ask, how many millions more will it cost in teachers, staff, and other associated costs, and will state funding cover the entire cost? MPS is also taking in a significant number of students that come from families that are not subject to the property taxes from this bond, which causes the overall utilization rate to be 94% after spending the entire bond. If 85% utilization is the target, then MPS needs to adjust the number of students from outside the district to match that target. We also have heard in these board meetings that yet another bond will be requested within the next 10 years. When will it stop? I know that you have the best interest of the students, and you have the best of intentions, but my position is that this particular bond should be defeated, and a more streamlined bond needs to be drafted. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, last on the list, I have Rose Roberts. Hi, Rose. Thank you.
Hi. I'd like to go back to the beginning, you know, where we're all happy, and wow, isn't this great, and the schools are doing great, and the future teachers. That was impactful. I'm a more of, I admire people that can do stats. I'm a more emotional person. I would rather be for something than against something. So for me to stand up here and say, no way, it's hard for me to do that. I'd rather say, yeah, let's go. Let me push. I'll push, but I'm not going to push for this. I want to start out with the, the meeting that I attended at the Senior Center on Friday. I was appalled, and this, is this in reference to a Northeast student? A mother said, "My daughter couldn't use the bathroom from, bathrooms for a month. I had to come get her from school because she could not use the bathrooms." I said, "What is that about?" She said, "One was vandalized, one was infested, she didn't say with what, and one had brown liquid coming from the ceiling, which happened to be the roof, but the kids didn't know. They're 12 years old." She said, "The girls aren't going to tell the boys they can't go to the bathroom." I was appalled. I said, "What? Don't we do maintenance?" She said, "Well, they do it at night, so they're not going to report." I'm going, "No, we pay for maintenance. This is obscene. I don't want my, my kids, my 12-year-old, not being able to go to the bathroom all day." Then I checked with my niece, whose kids go to Jefferson and Dow. She said, "Oh, no, my kids won't use those bathrooms. They're filthy." She said, "They come home from school, wash their hands, and go use the bathrooms." That's not right. This is Midland Public Schools. It's just not right. Now, part of it's because I'm a germaphobe. I'm a retired RN, so this really hits me, but I want to protect those kids, for God's sake. We pay to have it clean. Please have some, if I were to report it to the health department, would we pass an inspection? Would we? Anyway, let's go on to the next part. Want versus need. We want a lot, and that's great, but what do we need? Mr. Roush has talked frequently about providing for the littles. What about the seniors who live only on Social Security, and there are many that do, who, who come to the food handouts? One lady, I was told recently that one lady was crying because she, once she paid her, her mortgage and, and bought, paid for electricity, she had no money for food. Who's going to protect them? They paid for these schools with their taxes all these years. They have to leave the home that they've been living in because they can't afford the $1 a day? No, they can't. They're stressed. Next point, a Facebook post stated that we're paying, now, true or not, I don't know. This is just what I read. This is the information that's out there. $25,000 a month in a two-year contract for our robotics. Am I for robotics? Absolutely. Great, great idea. Have nieces and nephews in it. Fantastic. How do we get into $25,000 a month? Who owns that building? Who's making that money? That's $600,000 in two years. We could have built half a school for that much money. Is there an audit of the MPS? I'm sure there is. Just availability. Where does the money go? Where does $100,000 go? What, what, what amount goes to teachers? The actual dollar amount? I looked at the, oops, I'm wait, I've got a lot more to say, but, for another day. But thank you for listening. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Rose. Okay, that is the end of the list. However, if you did not get a chance to put your name on the list, and you want to address the board, please feel free. Raise your hand.
Hi, Melissa Buchek. I'm generally a very positive person, but I'm here tonight to voice some more concerns about how I believe you're misrepresenting the bond to the public in all of your bond proposal materials. Why has academic excellence become a selling point for the 2025 bond? As you've already heard, there's some concerns with where it's at, and I know you just recently gave, were given a presentation on it in January, and there's just a couple big boxes on those slides, like where you stand in, in the state. So 4%, 5% of certain, certain subjects, but top 4% to 5% in the state of Michigan is, is not excellence. Your comparison is a false measure of academic excellence. Michigan sits at number 42 in the US for education, and sadly, Michigan's average is not a benchmark for success. I've taken a look at the Michigan, at the elite Michigan schools which you compare to. Didn't have time to make your handouts. I'd be happy to email it to you. But to say that you're among the elite is also a far, far stretch from the truth. Did you know that MPS third-grade reading levels compared to the state and elite schools and what they are? Last year, MPS was just 10 points above the state at 50%. But the elite schools, if you take an average of those nine schools on your list, averages 66%. So you're still 15 points below these elite schools, which you claim to be at bar with or at, in comparison with. As I said, I'd be happy to send this all to you afterward. I've seen you talk with nuance through all these programs that you have on your agenda tonight, and on the facility bond website, you slice and dice all the enrollment numbers. You pay consultant companies to make these long documents of how they've calculated the numbers, and your budgets are extensive, and you look at all those numbers with care. But why does academics not get that same care? Why are we looking at two squares comparing you to state data, and why are we never shown, as the public, this data? Why are we told, on your website, there's no report? Go to myschooldata.org and look it up yourself. There's no clear indication of you even looking into this. The trend isn't going up, and you seem much more excited to focus on the numbers when the unit isn't dollars. But I also don't think you're telling the whole story there. So you put a table out, it's on your facility website. It shows schools in the area, or elite schools and schools in the area, and what their bond millages are. And when you try to market your bond proposal in terms of where the millage is, you don't sit, those, those elite schools aren't sitting at a high level. They're sitting at, three of them are sitting at a three mills. So I think this project's all vanity. The buildings aren't going to bring academic excellence.
Yes, ma'am. That's okay. What's your name?
My name's Suzanne Reel.
Thank you, Suzanne. Thank you, Suzanne.
And I feel bad that Dora and I think Elizabeth left, but I really appreciated the way Dora came up here and offered solutions to a problem. That was something I think we can all learn from, and handed it to you guys. I thought she did a nice job. And I felt bad for Elizabeth. My daughter teaches at Central Park. My daughter has a very high percentage of ADD and autistic children in her class. I can tell you for certain, Central Park isn't all, I can't say that, you know, she may have had her experiences, but I hate the public thinking that Central Park is all like that because she does an amazing job. She's not having kids suspended left and right out of her classroom. She has support from her, the administrative staff and all the counselors there that's very much appreciated and helpful and used as needed to help her kids be successful. So I just wanted to make sure that it, there are some really, really positive things going on at Central Park that people should know about, so that's all.
Thank you. Going once?
My name is John Kawicki, and I am the beneficiary of the Midland School System from the 1950s and 1960s. I love Midland. Have you ever heard me say that before? This is a fabulous, fabulous community. But four years ago, I was ignorant, stupid, foolish, and naive as to what was taking place in our system. It is not the same system that I went through. I'm going to bring my father into this because my father was merit-based and he believed in self-accountability. And I've done a review of my teachers and coaches, and I went, most of my teachers and most of my coaches followed that example. And I'm going to use two of you. I will not use your names, but I have had the opportunity to see two of you out in public, not with board, not with family, not with careers, involved in merit-based, personal accountable activities. About a year and a half ago, my wife and I were at East West Park Drive, that's upper, by Upper Emerson, Rivier Park, and we pulled up to a stop sign, and down the road, one of you came jogging by. Now, if you happen to jog in that area, I'm talking about you. And then we just sat there and watched you until you jogged out of sight. Another one of you, I've seen at a Planet Fitness, a personal health facility here in town, on a treadmill, working the weight machines. Merit-based, personal accountable activities. Now, does being involved in a personal physical fitness program add to or subtract from your overall mental, physical, and emotional well-being? I know what I believe, and I know that I've listened to countless people in the health and wellness profession, and I know what they believe. And I get to choose. And I think our school system has left the personal accountable activity merit-based, and I'm not going to bring up some of the things that I've heard, but one of my things my dad told me was to face the reality of the situation, and to face the reality of the situation, you have to look at both sides. So I've been looking at both sides for four years, and there seems to be a conflict into, you guys want to borrow a lot of money here. And if we're headed into without, but that gentleman said right there, if the proficiency isn't there, our new building's going to take care of that. I just, I just want to make sure that we're headed in the right direction, facing the reality of the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close comments then. Thank you very much, everybody who took time to speak to us and address the board. That will bring us, well, hold on, to our students. You guys, are you guys done? Ready to leave? Or do you want to keep going?
You're welcome to stay.
You're also welcome to leave if you want. I know you guys are wondering. Okay, we're going to march on. Next up, we have item number five, Administrative Services. We have Administrative Study Services Committee Notes from March 4th, 2025.
The Administrative Services or Study Committee met on March 4th. Present were Phil Roush, myself, Ann Horowitz, Penny Miller Nelson, Nate Aquilina, and Sarah Dooley. We met here in the Administration Building. We discussed recommended policy updates. The committee reviewed the recommended policy updates for policies 3115 through 3115H, 3118, 4101, 4102, 4104, 4105A, 5202, and 5206. The policy updates are due to recent changes to federal Title IX regulations. These policies will actually be on, are on the agenda to be taken for action tonight. The second thing we discussed was recent executive orders and related information from the Michigan Department of Education. We adjourned at 3:00.
Okay, thank you. Leading right into that, 5.2, we have a True in January 29, 2025 Policy Update. Penny?
Well, I'm going to sound like a repeat of what Jen just read, but yes, due to changes in federal regulations, we do have revisions to the following board policies, and these are being recommended by Administration to the Board for Action Tonight. These include 3115 through 3115H, 3118, 4101, 4102, 4104, 4105A, 5202, and 5206. This includes policies, administrative guidelines, and forums that are all part of that overall policy manual that we use, and these will be effective upon your approval this evening.
Okay. That is an action item, so I will accept the motion if one is available.
The adoption of Agenda Item 5.2?
Support.
Motion by Lauderbach, support by Ringold. Any further discussion about Item 5.2? Brad, you got your finger on the trigger? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, Item Six, Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. We have Item 6.1, Study Committee Minutes.
It's me again. Our Curriculum Instruction Assessment Study Committee met on February 18th. Members present were myself, Brad Blazy, Ken Weaver, Penny Miller Nelson, and we had several guests, Joy Yang-Yao, Jen Service, Tricia Clancy, Kaitlyn Wipesaw, Kim Welter, Kaitlyn Brewer, Dominique Ensley, Emily Sharnott, Gillian Seemster, and Christina Tignelli. And we met at Woodcrest with that extensive, amazing group of people. We started at 1:30, and Joy updated the Subcommittee on Family Engagement Initiatives within Midland Public Schools in the community. Jen Service, Tricia Clancy, Kim Welter, Kaitlyn, Dominique, Emily, and Emily updated the Subcommittee on Elementary Literacy. And then we visited Kaitlyn Wiesepal's kindergarten classroom to observe a phonics lesson, which was wonderful. Gillian Seemster and Christina Tignelli then updated the Subcommittee on the Elementary PYP Program, and some exciting stuff going on over the next couple of years. The meeting adjourned at 3:00, and then our next meeting was today.
All right, thank you, Jen. Next is Item Seven, Finance Facilities in Operations. 7.1 is FFO Study Committee Meeting Notes from March 3rd, 2025. Brad, I think that's you.
Finance Facilities in Operations Study Committee Meeting Notes from March 3rd. Members present, myself as chair, Scott McFarland, Jen Ringold, Penny Miller Nelson, Brian Bruton, and Anna Womack. Guests, none. We met here at the Administration Building. We discussed the January financials. December financials reviewed with the committee. Variances from year to year were discussed. The Filter First Grant, RFP. Administration will propose ordering equipment to comply with the Clean Drinking Water Act. Funding for this project will be from the Filter First Grant. Budget Amendment. Administration will propose a budget amendment that was reviewed with the committee. Variances from the original budget were discussed. Robotics Facility. The committee discussed options for a robotics facility. Facilities Improvement Bond Proposal Discussion. The committee discussed the upcoming proposal. The meeting adjourned at 3:49 PM.
Brad?
Okay, next, Item 7.2 is another action item, Filter First Bid. Anna?
Administration is recommending awarding the bid for bottle fillers and faucet filters to comply with the Clean Drinking Water Act to Aetna Supply Company of Grand Rapids. The project totals $194,456 and will be paid for from the Filter First Healthy Hydration
Move to approve the Filter First Bid.
Support. By Ringold, support by Lauderbach. Any additional discussion regarding Item 7.2? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, before we get to Item 7.3.
Yeah, thanks. Well, Sarah's getting that presentation up and Anna's preparing. I'll just offer to you all a quick update. As we look at this budget amendment, I think this is a good time for a reminder, and we just mentioned in the meeting minutes, our conversation about a robotics facility. Through our facility bond proposal discussions, we had those three student groups that we were seeking alternative solutions outside the bond, aquatics, our theater and music, and our robotics. And we made a commitment to seeking solutions for those three groups and have been actively pursuing those. So you should all know that Anna continues conversations with Midland Center for the Arts. Jen, and Brian, and I continue conversations with the aquatics committee, and we've had a team looking at possible facilities for robotics. And so I want you to know that we are optimistic about our ability to purchase a facility here in town to meet the needs of robotics. We believe it is a cost-effective solution. It's going to come in at way less than the estimated cost we had for new construction, and we're really excited about this. Many of you have been following this journey along with us. For the sake of transparency through our budget amendment process, you're going to see that number listed there. It's important to us that you, as a board, can understand where we are with this amendment with that likely cost coming on the books yet this year as we move into the last quarter. So I share that, so you're not surprised when you see that in Anna's description, and she'll talk us through it when we get to that stage. Thanks, Anna.
Thanks.
I'm sorry. We're going to carry right into 7.3. Anna, go ahead.
Perfect. Well, thank you. Tonight, we do have our first budget amendment for 2425. Just a reminder that a public school budget is not advisory in nature, but rather an accounting of the source and use of public funds. If either changes, the budget must be amended. Looking at our timeline for our annual budget, traditionally, the amendments happen in March and June. This timeline follows our previous traditions, and we are already in the preliminary stages of working on the 2526 budget. In June, we'll propose our 2526 budget and our final 2425 amendment. Additionally, we will be having our Board 2526 Budget Workshop this coming month on April 21st. Looking at factors that are impacting this budget amendment, timing and state funding information is always one of the biggest ones. We present our budget to you the first week of June annually, and in order to be able to do that, we're locking in our predictions the second of week of May to be able to prepare all the documents for the Board of Education packet. At that point, no per pupil increase, sorry, there was no per pupil increase as predicted in the budget that was presented to you in June. Based on the governor's, the House, and the Senate budget, they were all showing increases. That was what was factored in. We were all surprised in the late-night legislation that set the budget for the state that there was no per pupil increase. We also continue to have challenges reacting to categoricals that are included in the state budget. These include new items, predictions on what's going to be renewed and what's not going to be renewed, as well as approval of application-based funding and whether those are approved to Midland Public. Looking at noteworthy topics, retirement rates and cost offsets factor heavily into this budget. At the state level, in order to kind of offset the no-per-pupil increase, we were given different retirement rates as well as flow-through money that came from the state into our budget that we then pay out into retirement to help offset that no increase. We continue to react to new and continuing categoricals and the changes within there, health insurance rates of the predictions versus the actual interest rates of a similar nature, and also looking at disposals and acquisitions, including the East Lawn property, as well as looking at this potential new robotics facility. Looking at significant revenue changes in our amendment versus the initial budget of items over $400,000. Those first three areas, the 147C, 147A4, 147C2, all of those MIPSers are kind of that retirement area that was just talked about. We saw decreases in 147C that were almost immediately offset by increases in 147A4, the 147C2 rate cap. These kind of all lumped together to kind of come out as a wash with that 22B discretionary, which would have been your per pupil funding. Looking in there, we are showing an increase in predictions for property tax revenues, as well as a increase in GSRP, which is the Great Start to Readiness Program. I'm going to get that acronym potentially wrong there, but that's the preschool, as well as a predicted decrease in our 31A at-risk funding. Looking at our significant expenditure changes, also using a $400,000 threshold, you can see the first one right at the top is our prediction for robotics building purchase and upgrades during the 2425 school year, coming in at about 4.5 million. Underneath that, our 147C MIPSers rate cap, that has to do with the retirement costs that we were talking about, a decrease in there, as well as increases in software license, GSRP costs with that associated revenue we previously talked about, increase in title funds to match our funding source, as well as a decrease in our 31A expenditures that also meets that decrease in funding we just talked about. Looking at our general fund expenditures by function, we are showing a budget of about $116 million in expenditures, showing our instruction and student supports coming in at about 73% within this budget. 80.3% of this budget is in salaries and benefits. If we look at the budget without the building purchase in here, with that being such a large amount, it's kind of skewing all of these areas, and it's a one-time purchase within there. So I also want to present to you of what it looks like with that removed to be able to kind of get a truer picture of where we're allocating our funds. Within this, the instruction and student supports increases to 76%, and in this budget, 83.5% is salary and benefits. Looking at our March 2025 budget, the amendment that is being presented to you is in that first column, the 2425 Amendment Number One. But as Penny said, talking about the robotics building and the costs within there, we want to show you what those numbers look like also without the building, which is in the far-right column. Our audited fund balance on June 30th came in at $37,396,824, which was a bigger variance than our final prediction. We had predicted a 2% variance, it came in at a 6.2. Our prediction for where we thought we were going to come in in June was at $32,503,467, so we came in better than predicted. Looking at our variances within this budget, a 1% variance is about $1.16 million, and we will continue to fine-tune our expenditures and revenues as we go through the third and fourth quarters of this fiscal year. Looking ahead at our key budget drivers, our 2425 Second Budget Amendment will be on June 16th, 2025. We will continue to look through our departments and their expenditures and continue monitoring our categorical funds to make sure that we are spending those appropriately. We are also in the early stages right now of the 2526 budget development, where we are going to be looking at our enrollment, our estimates for state and federal funding, our personnel costs as we go through our staffing levels, salaries, steps, categories, retirement, medical, UAL, all those fun things that go into there. retirement, medical, UAL, all those fun things that go into there, our capital improvement needs, and we are also going through our departmental and school budget-building process. The alignment of staffing in our state budget plays a key role in this work. And the Budget Workshop next month will provide an overview of our financial status and our initial outlook on where we expect the fiscal year '26 revenues and expenditures to be. As stated in the past, this budget is a consistently moving target, and we need to be sure to invest our resources wisely for current needs, but always with an eye on the future to sustain the programs and services that make NPS a special place to learn. We will continue to work with the Superintendent and the FFO Committee as the processes progresses and present our final amendment and initial budget to you all in June. Are there any questions?
All right. This is an act, man, so I will accept the motion to adopt Budget Amendment Number One. The adoption of Budget Amendment Number One is proposed.
Support.
Motion by Lauderbach, support by Craig. Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving to Item 7.4.
We have one item tonight totaling $5,000 that will require your acceptance on behalf of the Board this evening. This item says robotic swerve drive system robot control and electrical for Midland High's robotics program from Huntington Bank. We would request that you approve accepting this gift this evening.
I make a motion to accept the money.
Support.
Motion by Blazy, support by Horowitz. Any additional discussion regarding 7.4? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The total amount of gifts listed for information only tonight is $13,386.09. These gifts this evening represent support for programs ranging from support for Jefferson Band Choir and Orchestra, field trip transportation, support for the Dow High School Space Farmers, support for Midland High student tickets for Space Explorers, as well as various sports teams. As is tradition, all donors are going to be recognized in the credits of this evening's broadcast and also through Board correspondence upon your behalf. We are grateful for our community's support and our students and our programs.
I'm sorry, I didn't have my microphone on. Next section, we are Section 8, Human Resources. Before we get to 8.1, I just want to note that there was not a study committee that happened between our last one and this meeting, so there are no notes to report. Moving forward, 8.1. Nate?
Good evening. The Board and staff extend their deepest sympathy to the following families. Gary Jozwiak, who passed away on February 8, 2025. Gary was employed with NPS as a math teacher, weights and conditioning instructor, head varsity football coach, and head boys track coach at Midland High School during his tenure. He retired in 1996 with 32 years of experience. After his retirement, Gary returned to Midland High as head varsity football coach for an additional two years. We also extend our deepest sympathy to the family of Veronica Sue Boydston, who passed away on February 25, 2025. Sue was employed as a bus driver with NPS for more than 25 years when she retired in 2021. She was well-known by the students she transported, particularly for her caring nature and the tubs of candy she shared with them.
Thank you, Nate. Okay. Next is Item 9, Correspondence from the Board of Education. Item 9.1 is Letters from the Board of Education to those entities identified in the agenda. Next up is Item 10, Scheduled Activities. 10.1 lists the upcoming Board of Education meetings. Please note, April 21, 2025 Budget Workshop and regular meeting beginning at 6:30 PM. That brings us to Study Session Discussion, I'm sorry. 11.1, any points of clarification?
Scott, I actually have two.
Fantastic.
Two things that were suggested in public comment that I think that I want to respond to. One, and when the history major starts talking about municipal finance, everybody should be nervous, so Anna, if anything I say is incorrect, I want you to correct me. My understanding is general obligation bonds, or for general obligation bonds, the full faith and credit of the school district is, can be used to ensure repayment, meaning our taxing power. The alternative to that would be revenue bonds or limited obligation bonds for which only the revenue stream from that millage or financing source can be used. So the investing public views general obligation bonds as a safer bet, because you can use the full faith and credit of the school district to repay them. So we get a lower interest rate. Is that generally accurate?
That would be my understanding.
So by issuing general obligation bonds, we are going to get a lower interest rate and hence pay less for the debt. And to do otherwise, we'd be paying more, if the investing public would buy $285 million worth of limited obligation bonds. Okay, so I just wanted to put, general obligation bonds are better for the taxpayer than the other options. Fair? Okay. Second thing is, hypothetically, let's say you're going to go to the bank, you want to buy a house, you're going to go to the bank and you're going to ask for a mortgage loan for $100,000. Over 15 years at 5%, that money costs you $142,342. I think we all under, you know, any of us, anybody that's borrowed money, you go to a closing, you get that truth and lending disclosure, and it says, okay, you're borrowing $100,000, but over the amortization period, this is the total cost of the money, $142,000. But you don't go to the bank and say, I'd like to borrow $142,000, the present value of which is $100,000. We're doing the same thing by saying we're borrowing from the taxpayers $285 million. Yes, we're going to pay interest on that, just like you do when you take out your mortgage. We're not, it's not sleight of hand, we're not, we're being fully transparent about what we're doing. We're borrowing $285 million. So to say, well, it's 285, except really it's 400, suggests that we're not being honest with the taxpayers. And I, I just felt like we ought to clarify that. We're being fully transparent with the taxpayers about exactly what we're doing. And the suggestion that it's really 400, while true over the life of the loan, is misleading. So that's just my personal opinion. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Any other points of clarification?
I'd like to point out that if we don't take the opportunity to fix, or in some cases, replace some of our schools, we will continue to have the same monetary needs to fix or replace our schools. And ultimately, if we, if the bond does not pass, that money comes from the general fund. When the money comes from the general fund, we have less overall money to work with. That generally means that our teachers suffer. That means that our kids suffer. So just saying no based on the principle that you don't believe that now is the right time to build a building or to repair our schools, when is the right time? Because ultimately, our kids will suffer if we don't take care of our building.
Thanks, Ann. Okay, Penny, I believe the floor is yours.
Yeah, I just have a couple of quick, first off, it was really wonderful to hear from Plymouth today and from our future teachers. Brad, I appreciated your comment to them. This is a program for them, but it is also for us as an organization. It is part of our strategy to help young people see that careers in teaching are wonderful opportunities, and we hope that they'll come back to us here in Midland. The other comment I just want to acknowledge is, on Friday, Phil and I signed the closing papers for our East Lawn Drive property, and that should be fully completed by the end of the week, and we're happy to have seen that project through. So thank you, Board, for just following that journey and empowering Phil and I to complete those documents last Friday. On to the spring, as you know, it feels like once, and we won't meet again, obviously, until after spring break, it seems after spring break, the rest of the year just cascades very quickly. So I'll just remind everyone to enjoy the moments that we have coming our way. There's lots of celebrations that have already started in our schools and will continue. We have PYP exhibition happening across our elementaries, lots of great celebrations in our middle schools and high schools as well, and those are moments to celebrate all of the ways that our students are successful. I know we put a lot of focus on test scores, this one test at this one moment in time, and it is important, and we are approaching assessment season as well, but I think there are many ways that we prepare students for success beyond just one test score. So I invite you to join in those celebrations where you can and lift our students up in all the great ways. Thank you.
Okay. Just want to say thank you to everybody who sat with us tonight at St. Patrick's Day. You may have other things to do or other things on your mind, and I certainly appreciate your time being here. I just want to point out that we are going to move into closed session by way of motion and roll call vote, after which we will come out of closed session simply to adjourn the meeting. There will be nothing discussed further, so don't feel like you have to wait around. If you want to, you're, of course, welcome to, but we will be coming out of the meeting and adjourning. So have a safe evening, and we'll see you next time. Thank you. Next up, Item 12. I'll take a motion to move into closed session.
I move to move into closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268, Sections 81C and 81H, for the purpose of discussion of strategy and negotiation collected with negotiation of collective bargaining agreement and for consideration of a written opinion of our legal counsel.
Okay. Thank you. This is a roll call vote.
Vice President McFarland?
Yes.
Secretary Ringold is a yes. Treasurer Lauderbach?
Yes.
Member Blazy?
Yes.
Member Craig?
Yes.
Member Horowitz?
Yes.
Passes 6 to 0.
Okay, we'll move in closed session. At this time, we are, our conversation did not go as fast as we thought it was going to go, talking about our different topics. So at this point, I will accept a motion to extend for 15 minutes, and then we will move back into closed session to finish our conversation, then come out, and we will adjourn.
Can we do the two things in one vote? Extend and go back into closed session, or do we have to do two separate?
Let's do the extend first, and then we'll move.
I move to extend until 9:45.
Support.
Motion by Lauderbach, support by Horowitz. Any further discussion? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we need to move back into closed session.
I move, oh, I move to go into closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268, Section 81H, for consideration of a written opinion of legal counsel.
Support.
It's a roll call vote.
Roll call vote, yep. Vice President McFarland?
Yes.
Secretary Ringold is a yes. Treasurer Lauderbach?
Yes.
Member Blazy?
Yes.
Member Craig?
Yes.
Member Horowitz?
Yes.
I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.